I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me, if you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, thank you. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Isili.
Here.
Councilman Powell.
Present.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. So we're going to start the work session today with a presentation by Noraki Smith of the draft 2024 annual financial report. And I can't actually see who's in the room, but I understand that Ernie Smith is with us from Noraki Smith. And our comptroller Dorothy Galuski. Are you, I don't know if anybody else is there too.
And Kathleen.
Kathleen is here with us.
Hi Kathleen.
Supervisor Moore, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Okay, so let me start. So the town is required to do an annual financial audit. And as in previous year for 2024, we have hired Noraki Smith to test the town's financial transaction and issue an opinion. And today with us is Ernie Smith from Noraki. He's the partner. He'll talk about the audit itself. He's going to give us highlights for the draft financial statements that were presented to each of you via email, and then talk about the town's financial position at the year end. And with that, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you Dorothy. Nice to meet you all today. Thanks for having me. I made it. I live in Dix Hills. I left at eight o'clock, so I was getting a little nervous. I was on the phone with Dave. So our audit team is Dave Tellier. Dave is the senior audit partner, and Sean O'Malley. So the first question is, where's Dave? And where's Sean? They've done an excellent job. Sean is having a baby right now, not Sean, his wife. He's having a baby right now. Dave's son has made the World Series finals, the state finals, to play in the World Series up in Binghamton. So I was asked to come and present to you today.
The Little League words will tell you.
The high school.
Oh, wow.
Yes. So this is a, this is a big deal. Dave has five children. They are all very talented athletes. And this is one of the most talented of all, so.
And we didn't want to postpone it because we want to do this before 2/30 deadline to accept the financial statements.
So you're under a lot of pressure.
Yes. Well, we're happy to have you with us, Ernie. Thanks for coming.
I've attended a few of these meetings before.
It'll be easy on you.
Hold on. Kevin, can you just make Maria's volume a little bit louder so we can hear a little bit more clearly?
Okay.
Kevin, did you, did you hear what I said? What was that? Sorry. Could you raise the volume for Maria so we can hear her when she chimes in? Yeah, I can raise it a bit. Thank you.
I don't know if she was Maria saying something.
She was just, she was, but.
Well, oh, I just said, thanks for joining us today, Ernie. Appreciate that you made the trip out.
Oh, no, thank you very much. It's a pleasure. You're a wonderful client to work with. I worked with the client, with you as a client, ten years, ten plus years ago when we started. And it's, it's a far different looking place than it was ten years ago, that I can tell you. And it's, it's quite wonderful to see.
All new faces.
What's that?
All new faces.
All new faces. Extremely positive performance. We do a number of towns and villages and so forth. And yours is probably the number one performing that we have. So really, it's a great accolades to yourself for shepherding this in the right direction. Having the right people that work for you is so important. Because when that doesn't work, that becomes, you know, part of the issue. And that's actually where we're going to start the certificate of excellence in financial reporting that's awarded to the town by government finance, or the GFOA for 2023, which is an outstanding accomplishment. And you should be very proud of that. It's really quite good. So the scope of our services, we audited the financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2024, in accordance with the U.S. generally accepted auditing government standards. So this is coming from the Audit Committee meeting that we previously had. So it's a pretty wide-reaching audit. We look at virtually everything, okay? So the preparation of the comprehensive report that comes along, which you'll see, that is this, which certainly passes the weight test in terms of having lots of content. But there are lots of different component parts of an organization that's so complex that needs to be reported. And that's been done. Audit of the following as of December 31st, 2024, the single audit of the federal work programs in accordance with the OMB compliance, which is all the federal monies that you have. Department of Transportation's state single audit, the Office of the Receiver of Taxes as of November 30th, 2024, trustees of the freeholders and comalty, Hampton Bay's Water District. And then we do some what's called agreed-upon procedures, which is like audit work, but less, to a lesser degree, related to the financial assurance criteria. We issue a management letter, which has our letter recommendations on improving accounting procedures and internal controls, which we will talk a little bit about. It'll be a small amount because the controls here are outstanding, so. And the results of the financial statements were presented earlier to the town board. So that's pretty much the scope. The audit readiness and responsiveness, I mean, just amazing, timely and accurate closing of the books and records on March 3rd, which, so just count back, the end of the year is December 31st. That is an extraordinary accomplishment for an organization this size to be able to close and be ready in that short a duration. So it's definitely exemplary. No audit adjustments. So again, are any of you financially oriented people, familiar with audits? So it's rare to have no audit adjustments. So that speaks to the effectiveness of the folks that manage and keep the books of the township, which is, it's really important. Okay? The, a smooth audit, great cooperation from the comptroller's office and all the departments. As I said earlier, financial statements reviewed by the Audit Committee. So that's point number four in our summary, okay? We have a clean or unmodified opinion. So for those of you who are familiar with audits, we used to have a different kind of language. Unmodified is the same equivalent as clean. The highlights, when we look at some of the numbers, and I think this is a really important part to take some note of. So this is the government-wide financial statements. This is when we take the financials and instead of looking at it from the fund perspective, we treat you like a business. So that should something that you can pay note to, full accrual. Total assets and deferred outflows of 1.9 billion. Capital assets net represented 1.4 billion, and increased approximately 75 million from the prior year. Total liabilities and deferred inflows of 578 million. So the positive change, change in the net position was 83.7 million for the year to a total of 1.3 billion. Okay? I don't think I need to say that is quite extraordinary in terms of your position at this, at this point in time. So that's the, the full accrual basis. So if you were looking at a business, one would say this is an excellent performing business. It's doing quite well. Then we look at the fund statements, the general fund statements, okay, which is the current focus financials. Here we're looking at the ability really, almost on a cash basis, to sustain yourself. How do I make it from year to year? Can I do that? So on the full accrual, looking at the full balance sheet, so that's that ability for you to, you know, if you're not doing well, people can always dip into some savings account, or they could dip into some form of financing, okay? When you look at the current focus statements, that's where we kind of separate the two apart, okay? So total assets of 466.8 million, primarily consisting of cash and receivables, so very liquid. Total liabilities and deferred inflows of 32.8 million. That's a pretty low number. Total fund balance, 433.9 million, which consists of the following: 6 million in non-spendable, those would be non-spendable fund balance items, 299.1 million of restricted, 19,000 of committed, and 103.2 million of assigned, and 25.6 million of unassigned. So those are quite substantial supports for the rainy day. So if you ever have a rainy day, you are well-prepared for that to happen. Revenues expenditures, net increase in fund balance of 41.5 million. Total revenues of 241.8 million, total expenditures of 234.9 million, and total other financing sources of 34.6 million. So from a financial highlight perspective, both on that full accrual like a business, great performance, that current focus, which is all about government reporting, and that's the Gatsby side of things, we easily meet our obligations and are performing quite efficiently. Findings and recommendations, as I said earlier. So there's no material weaknesses nor significant deficiencies. So just to distinguish between the two, and some of you are still in the Audit Committee, so I apologize if we're repeating some things that were said there. But material weaknesses are obviously the worst. Those are things that could lead to some type of financial anomaly or lack of reporting, you know, in the proper manner. None of those, of course. Significant deficiencies, again, on the side of internal control, there are none. Then we test for those pretty aggressively. No additional recommendations at this time for improvements in policies or procedures. So from an overall perspective, from our end of things as your auditors, this is probably one of the cleanest bills of health we've ever given to an organization like yours, of this size, especially.
I mean, that's been consistent, I think, throughout my time in office here, so.
Year over year. So that consistency is so important. I wish I could tell you that's where it is everywhere, but it's not. And a lot of this, it's not, it doesn't happen by chance. It happens with great leadership. It happens with a great supervisor, a great board, you're joined together, you're cohesive, and that makes it work from a financial perspective.
And I can't forget Dorothy and her office. Well, good employees.
I couldn't say enough things about, and you've had other people in this role before, and she's been a blessing to have you.
Probably get a dollar out of her.
You know, unfortunately, you know, Bill, that's her job. Her job is to question.
Just do it, the tester.
Yeah. It's so different. We work in towns and villages, libraries, schools. We have about eighty schools as clients. We see all of the different types of organizations that are out there. The most complex is the town.
I have a question for you. It's gone, you know, other accounts you do, you have this account. What's the ratio of people who bond stuff? Does a lot of towns bond more or less?
More. Yeah.
So, you know, I think we bond too much already. Is that like the pairs we go along, which is better?
So there's a balance to be struck. It certainly depends upon the interest rate environment. Your bonds are obviously solid. So from an investor perspective, if you float a bond, I'm sure you have plenty of acres. No issues. And you're probably getting the best rate possible. So it really comes down to, is there's timing issues that come up? What is the timing of your cash flows? What's the nature of what you're bonding? You know, how does that bond, does that, what you're bonding fit over the, let's say, if it has to do with something related to assets, the life of those assets, or a project? And then what's going to be the plan that's, it's going to be paid back?
We try to stay consistent with the borrowing, just because we don't want, we want to keep the debt service level. We don't want to have spikes going high and going low. So we try to borrow similar amounts. Of course, there are years, like last year, we borrowed additional, you know, $21 million for ECD. But that's once, you know, every ten years. But we try to keep it about 13, 15 million dollars a year. Only because we then, we try to, like I said, we try to look at it and make sure that when we do debt forecast, we don't put too much on taxpayers to pay higher year over year. We try to make them level, so it's the same amount of debt service.
And even the ECDs, even though we borrowed 21 million more, that was a continuation of the payments that those residents had been paying.
Right. That was continuation. So nothing, so their tax bills remain similar to what they were. Now, it's, it's not, it's, yeah, it's more or less similar to what they were. Correct.
That's not the tax, that's the tax for that C, that group of.
Correct. Just the people residing within those. No, 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 no. So those were special districts. It's only people within those special districts. And we have a lot of special districts, that only the people within those districts, they vote. I mean, we're talking about doing East Quag Village. So East Quag, what is it, Park Resort, Park, East Quag Park. That would be only the people within the East Quag that will be contributing to that special district, if that passes.
Yeah, those, those.
And Bill, last year, we did try to limit the bonding to special projects and eliminate as many recurring events as possible, you know, the recurring expenses like highway paving. And we could do a little more of that this year also.
Right. We set aside, instead of borrowing, we set aside, we did 500,000 in 2023, '04. And then 2025, this year, we set aside a million dollars in operating. So instead of borrowing that million dollars, we put it in the operating fund.
That's, that's a good plan. Highway paving is under, not criticism, but review by many communities because, you know, we've, our roads here on Long Island are used so much, and it's a big expense to pave. So having to choose between paying from operating if you can, and if you have that ability to do that with a longer-term plan, I think the taxpayers are more aware of those kinds of operational issues that you're faced with. And they want, you know, they want nice roads. Nice roads, yeah.
Safe.
Safe roads. They want nice roads. They want good garbage pickup.
They don't have that.
It's not us.
Oh, they want beautiful beaches. Yeah, private garbage pickup, yeah. My, my very close friend is the supervisor for the town of Huntington. So when he comes and does presentations, it's beach, beach, you know, beaches, parks, roads, and garbage pickup. And that's, he says, that's my job. But, but people look to the services, that they're delivered, and they're delivered efficiently, and they look to the quality. I mean, this is one beautiful community, and not just here in this Southampton proper, but around the area, I know quite well.
The board cares. You have people who are elected who cares, and the employees care. Try to work as a team.
Agree. Are there any issues that you have concerns about that you want us to give consideration to from a futuristic perspective?
Oh, I think, didn't a lot of our permits just switch over, it would be in this cycle, to two-year permits instead of one?
Our fund balance in land management really went up from what I predicted, only because, I mean, there were more, but also the permits were changed. So that, our fund balance in land management went up quite a bit. And, but so far, they're doing well. I don't know what we bought, I think we did, but I think it's consistent from prior year. Because we're always a little behind, because, but I think January, February, March, they were almost as from prior year. So we haven't seen any truck, but who knows? I mean, I don't know what the, but yeah, building, land management is one of those funds that will, and the, the outcome will depend for changes. But we not only switched, but we also increased fees. So that helped again with growing, you know, the growth of the fund balance.
Do you get pushed back on fee increases from people?
Yeah, I do.
Depends what it is.
Yeah. People are more sensitive to some than others, and, yeah. And being, being as transparent as you can is.
You always have the core people complaining about everything, then you have people who complain, you know, don't complain. Depends what it is.
So you mentioned the community preservation funds are in this also, so with that, the balance in the community preservation funds would be reflected in the restricted fund balance?
Correct.
Okay.
Because, correct. I mean, fund balance and CPF at the end of the year is over 200 million dollars. And yes, it's restricted because it's for a specific purpose.
Right. And what's the difference between assigned, oh, I'm sorry?
So, so when you see the 25.6 million on the sign, that's in general fund, because only general fund can have unassigned. Every other fund, the fund balance that is there, it's gonna be assigned to that fund.
And unassigned means it can be used for, for any purpose that, but typically you go through a board process to approve the use of it. Okay. Tight controls, which is what you've been about for a long time. That's why you're getting another award, I'm sure. We hope, yeah. I, I would just tell you, as a firm, it's a privilege to work for you, and I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for doing a good job for us.
Yeah, Ernie, thank you for your team's careful review. And we met with the Audit Committee and some other members of your company and Dorothy. And they were very pleased, of course, with the results too. And we wouldn't be where we are without Dorothy and Kathleen and the comptroller's department diligent oversight of all the finances. So thank you both.
And thank you all as well for participating and, you know, making the decision and the budget prices. And because it's, that's what we have to do, working closely together.
And in the years coming, we'll be knocking on the doors, so. It goes so fast. And that's the whole thing. You can't believe it's already June.
I know.
But you're out of the gate early, you're finished. Everything's tied up, it's just safe. I wish all of us were this.
Well, the department heads are putting their wish lists with us together now, I'm sure, so. Have to.
Can't wait.
Card on the budget.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for doing a great job, everyone.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Okay, well, that's really, that's the only thing we have on the work session agenda today other than the town council and supervisor updates. Rick, would you like to get us started?
Sure. Real quick, Battle of the Bands last Friday. Michael was one of the judges. I know they did a great job. It was a great cast. They had a bunch of bands, five, I think five bands, four pre-entertainment entertainers at the beginning. It was a really nice crowd. I've been going for like six, seven years now, and it was one of the better crowds that they've had in quite a while. So Michael, great job judging. I know it's not an easy task.
That one was, that was actually a really difficult, the, the previous year was a little bit easier. This one was tough. This one was very tough.
It was a good night, though. And I just wanted to do a shout-out. My daughter-in-law and son had their first baby on Tuesday, so we have a new member of the family. Thank you. Daniel George has made my wife and I grandparents for the first time.
Oh, congratulations. That's so special.
I listen to these every week. You better mention the new baby.
I love that they, they used George as the middle name. That's great.
Yeah, that was, he didn't want a junior, but his middle name is Gerard, after Jerry, his grandma. So he kept the DGM, so.
And be prepared, because my husband is also a Daniel with his father, and he's not a junior, because he's a different middle name. But every piece of mail, and everybody calls him a junior, and he spent his entire life going, "I'm not a junior."
Well, thanks, Rick. Bill, do you have any updates for us?
Sunday, I attended Eagle Scout for young Mr. King, him and his father there. And the community came out, and was very, was very nice, very proud of him.
Always fun to do the Eagle Scouts. What project did he do?
Uh, he did some stuff at SYS, did a basketball training program, did a lot of community stuff. He did a really.
It's a long journey and a lot of dedication to get to that point of Eagle Scout.
Yes.
Well, I'm glad you were there to honor him. Michael, do you have something to update us?
Just a couple of things. So I actually attended the local government meeting for Pecan Gestuary Partnership yesterday, and there was a lot of discussion on septic improvement outreach, identifying low-lying areas, working with our town to make sure that folks are aware of the programming. So, so Pep is really working hard on that. You know, the county's making a lot of progress with their program for septic improvement. So we're actually, our town is blessed to have most of the applicants. There are, the numbers are rising in the other towns, but, you know, Pep is just making sure that we are getting the word out on all of that, and they're happy to partner with us to do that. I was actually at the Noyak Civic Council meeting yesterday, and we heard from the Southampton Trails Society. They talked about all the different trails, all the work they do, all the interconnections. And last night was a strawberry moon, so there was some discussion on all of that. And also, I just wanted to announce that the, the Housing Department is holding a Housing Resource Fair on June 21st to discuss the Down Payment Assistance Program. So please get the word out. That's going to be at 11:00 a.m. at the Hampton Bay's Community Center, where they'll have that resource fair. So if you want information about the Down Payment Assistance Program, please feel free to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, on that IA system outreach, I'm going to send an email to Dr. Novak at Pep just to connect her with, I know that Lynn Arthur on our Sustainability Committee was talking about doing outreach as well as the group for the Me Cox Bay. So perhaps it would make sense for them all to work together instead of each group trying to do their own.
Yep, that's, that's absolutely true. And they're aware of a lot of the other groups, and they're going to be, you know, they want to definitely talk with us a little bit more about what our current efforts are. So yes, a meeting beforehand would be good.
And actually, in the near future, they're going to make the map wider, so almost everyone in the town will be able to get it.
All right, thank you, Michael. Cindy?
Uh, Saturday night, I joined the Southampton Fire Department for their annual installation dinner. It was actually a really nice event, and it was great because a, my very good friend, growing up through high school, her dad is basically a second dad to me, Brian Cook, received the Lifetime of Dedication and Service Award. I was able to give with Mayor Manger a 50-year service proclamation on behalf of this town board to Rich Grodsky and Steve Phillips, Sr., again, two gentlemen that I grew up knowing. And my brother-in-law, Dean, was recognized as a top responder. So it was a, it was actually a really nice event to be there for all of them, as well as honor the other, the other men and women who were honored. Monday night, I had the Flanders CAC meeting. It was their second meeting. We had quite a few members of the Franka Board join us. John Comer from Wildwood Lake was there, and actually, legislator Stark joined us for that meeting. So it was great to get some county input for the area. It was, you know, we definitely have some growing pains, but we're getting there, and I think it's, they're, they're on the right track. And, and, you know, I see improvement every meeting, so we're looking forward to July. And then last night, we had the meeting for the East Quag Park District. And I want to say there were just about over 30 people that came overwhelmingly positive. There was one resident who was concerned about people on a fixed income, maybe couldn't, you know, afford $20 even. And there was actually a lady in the back of the room, and she raised her hand, and I called on her, and she said, "This has to happen. Can I pay their $20?" So it was good. Kathleen went through very clearly what the, what the setup was and how it, how it comes into effect in that really this isn't, you know, this isn't the town taxing the residents. It's the residents actually choosing to tax themselves to benefit their hamlet. And, you know, we assure them that the money stays in the hamlet. It doesn't get dumped into the general fund at the end of the year. It's their funds. Overwhelming, though, I'd say everyone there was pretty much in support by the end of the meeting. Nobody really had any strong opinions against it, or the only thing that was asked was getting out word to the community about the public hearing. So I had told them that I would reach out to the highway superintendent and see if we can get one of those electronic billboards and put it at the East Quag Village green with the public hearing date on it when that's set. This way, it's, you know, it's not just on social media or our public hearing notices. It's something that they can drive by and see. And if they need, you know, ask more questions, they can call, you know, Town Hall. So overall, it was, it was, it was very positive. Like, there wasn't any, you know, there wasn't any really negative feedback that I heard last night that would make me think that this isn't something we should do. It was overwhelmingly positive, and people giving their reasons, more or less, why we should have this versus, you know, why they don't want it, so.
Yeah, that's good to hear, that there was, you know, turnout. And I like the idea of the sign. There was an article on 27 East. I don't know if it got in the print edition, but that's also a way to make people be informed.
And between the Civic and the CAC, they have sent out over 1,600 emails to residents, so. A lot of people, and then that was the question, like, there weren't a lot of people at the meeting, but, you know, all told, you know, if you hear there's something that you want, and it's going to cost you $20, and you're okay with that, many of these people don't want to give up their Wednesday night to come and hear about something that they're in agreement on, so. And it was worth noting, I talked to some individuals after that go to all of the East Quag meetings, and there was actually more participation and more turnout for this meeting than they got for the school budget hearing, than they've gotten for other big events. than they've gotten for other big events in East Quag. So it actually, thirty-two doesn't seem like a lot of people, but it was actually a, for East Quag, a good turnout.
And I have one more little thing. Actually, it's a very important thing.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yep.
The S T O P Day at North Sea Transfer Station for paints and oil-based product and pesticides can be dropped off. Very important thing.
What day is that? This Saturday?
Yes, the twenty-first, rain or sun. Don't be late.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks for, you know, mentioning that.
Thank you from the American Legion. You know, the American Legion is, uh, they're struggling. They're trying to get new members, they're trying to update their facilities. And one of the things they've been doing this year is a burger night on Wednesday night. So they approached the town about having a permit to put a tent outside so that they can, you know, be more relative in the summertime. Instead of being downstairs, they'll be outside. And they had their first burger night last night. It was extremely well-attended. Uh, it was a great atmosphere. The kids were playing cornhole and some Connect Four. And, uh, you know, I got to sit at a table with some of the veterans and, and really discuss what their ideas were for the future and how they wanted to move the Legion forward. So it was a really nice night to do that. And, uh, a reminder tomorrow, the flag ceremony at Hampton Bay's Elementary School, which they've been doing for years now, uh, is honoring one of ours here, Judge Gunn, tomorrow, ten o'clock.
Well, thanks, Rick, and the, um.
Nine thirty. I'm always a half hour off.
And the burger night is every Wednesday?
Every Wednesday, yes.
Yeah, it's good prices and a good, for a good cause.
It always is.
Yeah. All right, well, if, uh, no one else has any other comments, I'll just say I'm looking forward to getting back there in person for our next meeting. And, um, I move now to go into executive session for litigation, personnel, and acquisitions, and then close.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone. Meeting adjourned.